Good morning. Welcome to this Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, March 28th. And we'll have a roll call, please.
Yes.
Here.
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 Whitlatch?
Here.
Itigliano?
Here.
Aguilar?
Here. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the Chair. Note, in order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. We shall continue with the approval of minutes of the March 14th, 2018.
I saw one minor correction at the end where it said, "Under the adjournment." It should read March 28th instead of April 11th on that one. Other than that, looks pretty good.
Is that your motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with that change.
Second. Roll call?
Wong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Itigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes. At this time, we will go on to the parcel map public hearings. Actions on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to discuss any of these items requests that it be pulled for separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any of these items unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate vote on these items. So we have Item A, tentative parcel map, PPM 17-041, PPM 18-002, and PPM 18-003. Any of these need to be pulled? We will open the public comment if anybody would like to speak on any of these items. That microphone over there.
I'm actually over the process here, and I think this is where I get a chance to get to...
Through the chair, he suggests for those three items he listed.
Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And we will go ahead and have separate motions for each item.
I'll make a motion, we approve category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the State SEQA guideline pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to the construction and location of limited number of new small facilities or structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 17-041 with the denial of the exceptions and with the requirement to file final map.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call?
Wong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Itigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes. PPM 18-002.
I'll make a motion, we approve category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the State SEQA guideline pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 18-002 with the exception and final map waiver.
I second that motion.
Roll call?
Wong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Itigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Roll, keep rolling.
And the final one, PPM 18-003. It's your turn today.
All right, I make a motion, we approve category exemption consistent with California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the State SEQA guideline pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 18-003 with an exception and final map waiver.
I second that.
Roll call?
Wong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Itigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes. Okay, we shall continue with the public hearings for special use permit PSP 18-001.
Good morning Chairman Aguilar and Commissioners.
Is this address correct?
Sorry?
Located at 3282 Avenue. I thought our avenues would be like 328.
This is up by Danube.
Probably a top one.
Starting from the top.
I just questioned.
Good morning Chairman Aguilar and Commissioners, I'm April Hill, Planner 3.
There you go.
Lean forward, speak into it, got it. The proposal is from Brenna Bay Artado of HDO Trucking. He asks that the Planning Commission grant a use permit for an agricultural service establishment, a farm labor contractor, on a three acre portion of a 4.4 acre parcel located in AE40 Zone. The site is located at 37980 Road 80 near Danube, on the east side of Road 80, about 1,300 feet north of Avenue 376 and four miles south of Danube. The applicant leases a portion of the property and the business has been operating on the site since 2011, was cited with a code violation for operating a trucking business, and went through the project review committee last June. Approval of the use permit and compliance with the conditions of approval will resolve the code violation. The proposal does comply with general plan. The AE40 Zone allows an ag service establishment with an approved use permit. The parcel has frontage on county maintained Road 80. County Public Works recommends construction of a drive approach. All onsite parking areas shall be serviced for all weather conditions. Estimated maximum daily trips will average 65 during the harvest season, and they are less than the 100 peak hour trips that would require a detailed traffic analysis. The aerial shows the residence on the site that's occupied by the property owner's daughter and the applicant's truck parking and storage areas. During the harvest season, 14 employees work from the site. Operational hours are 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM or dawn to dusk. Minor repairs and maintenance do occur on the site. Surrounding properties are also zones AE40 and contain agriculture and scattered rural residences. The nearest offsite residence is about 200 feet south of the truck parking area. The project does generate noise as equipment is repaired and as trucks depart and arrive, but there should have a minimal effect on nearby residences as it's similar to the existing agriculture operations. The California Natural Diversity Database shows one species of concern, salt brush, salt bush or brittle scale, listed as rare, threatened, or endangered by the California Native Plant Society, not threatened or endangered. However, the site has been used for rural residents and agriculture for decades. The project site does not include wetlands or waterways. Stored on the site are three service trucks, 15 other trucks, a tractor, a forklift, three C train storage containers, 20 fruit bins, eight portable toilets, about 175 packing tables and 200 pallets. And the applicant has two diesel fuel tanks, which requires a hazardous materials business plan for the Tulare County Environmental Health Services Division. Portable toilets stored on the site shall be pumped and cleaned by a licensed liquid waste taller, and conditions of approval of the facility include compliance with state and local regulations. The project qualifies for a categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act per the general rule that if the site is not located in an environmentally sensitive area, Section 15301 regarding existing facilities, and Section 15303 regarding new construction or conversion of small structures. The notice for the public hearing provided a 10-day comment period and was mailed to surrounding property owners within 300 feet. The notice was also published in the Fisiliad Times Delta, no comments were received. This ends staff's report. I do not know whether the applicant is in the audience. Do you have any questions for me?
Yes, you mentioned hours of operation of 6 to 5.
Yes.
And then you also said dawn to dusk.
That's the practical, that's the reality of it.
I wonder if it should just say dawn to dusk because 5 o'clock is...
Yes, that's what I put in the conditions of approval.
Questions for April?
Questions about the legal description. We have all the old parcels in Tulare County, and Parcel 1 is basically the exact description of Parcel 2. Is this an actual legal parcel, or is this an APN parcel? And there's one person understands what I'm talking about, his name's David on our staff.
This is a use permit, public hearing, through the Chair, the use permit?
Looking at the long use permit here?
18-001.
18-00, okay, I got, I'm mixed up. That's okay.
Thank you, sir.
I grabbed the wrong one, okay, that's okay. I got it now.
At this time, we will open the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak on this item, please step forward and state your name and address. April, you said the applicant was not here?
Evidently not. He and his wife were planning to be here, but...
Hello, I'm Dennis Freezen. I live on the longer area to the west of it, and...
Name and address?
Address is 38043, Road 84. And my dad, he's the owner of that land right next to it also. We're just concerned that if they build buildings there, that there's going to be people living in the area, I mean more residents on the site. And as we've seen, it seems like when there's more buildings and structures built, that there's also people that seem to, our apartments get made, and people seem to live in their residence, and then there's more of that going on. So we don't want it to be divided up that our building's built that more inhabitants or more residents are living on that area. Because it's already, if you look to the south of it, there's also four, five acre pieces, and there's several houses on each one. And it... So that's our concern.
Through the Chair, the applicant is not planning to expand. Right now, he's, he just does the repairs out of the C train containers and out in the open. There's one existing residence on the site. They are not planning to build any structures at this time, especially particularly since he's leasing.
And if they did, they would have to get a separate permit for that. So this does not allow them to do that, so...
Right.
There's at least one house on the property already. Is there a second on there?
No.
Just the one. So there could be a second home built on this. But they would have to get a permit. Right, right. But I mean, it's just about by right for a second home.
Through the Chair, April, what's the zoning on this?
40, AE40.
AE40, no, it's not by right. Only residential zones.
Okay. Any others? Then we will close the public hearing. Move to a vote. Actually, just a question for April. They've been in operations since 2011, you said?
Yeah.
Haven't had any complaints up to this point, have we?
It was a code violation, and I'm not sure, it was probably anonymous complaint.
Just the one, just at that point in time, is that what?
Yes.
One question. It said the porta-potties, that a company would have to come and drain them or whatever they do, but it said on your report, cleaning them. Is the applicant going to be cleaning them? And if so, do they have a place?
I don't think it's allowed to be discharged there. They've got to be removed.
That's what my question is. I thought you said that the applicant would be cleaning porta-potties there.
Normally, the cleaning happens, it has to be done by a licensed...
Even the cleaning?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
And pumped all out and...
Okay. Motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve a categorical exemption pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15061, subsection B, subsection 3, the general rule, Section 15301, existing facility, and Section 15303, new construction or conversion of small structures, consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the State SEQA guidelines, and conditionally approved special use permit number PSP 18-001, subject to findings and conditions.
I'll second that.
Through the Chair, I think there was a comment about dusk to, with the revision of dusk...
And we'll add the...
On to dusk, rather.
Add the condition of dusk to dawn, operating hours versus absolute time.
There was a second?
I seconded it.
Wong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Itigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Thank you Commissioners.
I will need to recuse myself in this next one, so I'm not sure who's...
Yours truly.
This guy.
Moving on to Item B in the public hearings. We're hearing special use permit number PSP 17-087. Jesus Pantoya. Our planning person today is Dana Metlin.
Good morning. Thank you Commissioners. This is a categorical exemption and a special use permit. It's PSP 17-087, and this is for a contractor's storage yard on a 10,000 square foot portion of a one acre parcel, which is in the AE40 Zone. And the site is located on the east side of Road 118 between Carlton Avenue and Avenue 261, which is on the east side of Mooney Boulevard. And the business is Arizona Heating and Cooling. This is the location and property ownership map for the hearing notification. This project was noticed according to the law, and staff has not received any comments regarding the project. Project is categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction. The use of this section is applicable and appropriate because 1,300 square foot storage building would be constructed on site if this project is approved, which is less than the 10,000 square feet in floor area allowed under this exemption. Entitlement is found in Section 16B2 of Ordinance 352, which allows contractors' storage yards in the AE40 Zone that do not involve any manufacturing, fabrication, or retail sales of construction material or equipment, provided that the use is accessory to an onsite dwelling unit occupied by the owner of the facility and provided that the lot or parcel does not exceed five acres in size. And this proposal meets these provisions. Entitlement is also found in Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 20090780, which accepted the Planning Commission's interpretation of zoning policy related to contractor's storage yards. One, that the Planning Commission determined both small businesses and equipment storage for smaller operations was intended to be allowed. Two, the ordinance was written to allow for a small office of less than 400 square feet with a restroom facility. Three, the accessory office would be limited to no more than two non-resident employees, and that no more than 10 employees would visit the site on a daily basis. Four, hours of operation would be restricted to 30 minutes before sunrise and 30 minutes after sunset. Five, the secondary use is considered to be less than 50% of the total parcel size. Six, no more than 10 supporting equipment, wait, supporting vehicles shall be allowed on the site. And conditions of approval will be implemented to enforce these policies. And the project is located in the county adopted urban area boundary of Tulare, and the land use designation is Mooney Corridor. The project was found to be consistent with the applicable Tulare County general plan policies. This is the vicinity map. Project is located at 26154, Road 118. Right there. Zoning. This is AE40 Zone. The properties to the north, east, and south are zoned agriculture and contain rural residences and road crops. The properties directly west are zoned residential and contain a single-family subdivision. This is the aerial photograph. This parcel contains a single-family residence, one mobile home, and a shed. And there's going to be the new structure in this area here. Down here, I'm on the wrong site. Right there. Okay, there's another aerial view. And these sheds down here, these have been removed from the site, as well as this carport here on the mobile home, so those structures are not on the site plan. Street side view. Driver approach will need to be constructed from Road 118 into the subject property. And this is the site plan. This is a contractor's storage yard for the storage of material, equipment, and vehicles being used for the applicant's heating, ventilation, and air conditioning business. The materials and equipment are currently being stored inside the carport but will be removed to the new 1,300 square foot storage building when the construction is completed. The types of materials being stored are ducts, HVAC units, parts for repairing units, and sheet metal. There is not any metal fabrication that takes place at this location, as all of the sheet metal fabrication is subcontracted to a licensed sheet metal fabricator. And the applicant employs five persons, and he states that the shift is 8 to 5, but again, we have the sunset to sundown rule. There are three work trucks stored at this location, and there's a building permit pending for the storage. And no customers visit this location, and that concludes my report. Questions? I believe the applicant is here? Yes? Yes, okay. Over here.
Commissioners, have any questions?
One question for Dana. Is this business primarily ag-related business?
No, it's air conditioning.
Right.
Contractor storage yard.
Is this appropriate in an ag zoning?
There is a violation on this property also, I think I forgot to mention that.
Is this activity appropriate in an ag zone?
It's a contractor's storage yard, and we allow contractor's storage yards in agricultural zones with a special use permit.
I thought that if they were ag-related, but I understand.
Through the Chair, I believe...
That's an ag service establishment.
An ag service establishment might be what, maybe what you're referring to.
Oh, okay, so that's different than a contractor's yard?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Under our zoning code.
Okay. All right, I'm satisfied, I just thought we were...
This is a public hearing, and at this time, I will open up this session to the public. Does anyone have any comments to make? Either positive or negative. Would the owner of the project like to speak? No?
Shaking his head.
No other questions, then I will close the public hearing. And we'll have a summarization of the actions to be taken.
Staff is requesting that your commission approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA according to Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction and conditionally approved special use permit number PSP 17-087.
Make that motion that was just stated.
I second that. Wong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Itigliano?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much Dana.
Can we call back?
There comes the Gilster.
Permanent points. Wanted your back.
Okay. We will now take up a public hearing that will pertain to initial study and mitigated negative declaration consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the State SEQA guidelines and adoption of the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for GPA 16-005, EZC 16-007, PPM 16-030, the general plan amendment to change the land use designation from agricultural to rural residential on a 7.5 acre portion, a 27.66 acre parcel, zone change to change the zone from... Zone change, to change the zone from AE forty to RA eighty-seven on the same seven point five acres. Tentative parcel map to divide the twenty-seven point six six acre parcel into three parcels and a remainder. Parcel one is two and a half acres, parcel two is two and a half acres, parcel three two and a half acres, and the remainder parcel twenty point one six acres. And five tentative map exemptions on property located quarter mile east of road one forty and sixteen hundred and fifty feet south of Avenue three twenty-eight within the urban area boundary of Visalia. Assessors, parcel number zero seven nine dash one nine zero dash zero one seven.
If you could continue on.
Okay. The public hearing is now open. We would like to welcome those members of the public who had attended today. At this time, I would like to outline the process that we are going to follow during the public hearing. Because this is a public hearing to amend the general plan, all of the above items mentioned will be heard under one public hearing. RMA will make its presentation. The public will be invited to comment on the item. After the public's discussion, RMA will be asked for its recommendations in the matter. Then the matter will be discussed by the Planning Commission and actions taken by the Planning Commission. At the conclusion of the action by the Planning Commission, the public hearing will be closed. Each interested party will have three minutes to speak. The only exception to this limit will be at my discretion. You may not yield your time to others or reserve time to speak again. Because we might have a number of interested parties here, we request that you do not restate or repeat comments. I will repeat that. We request that you do not restate or repeat comments. Testimony or information or duplicate any, or duplicate any comments, testimony, or evidence given by a speaker before you. That you do not read extensively from written materials that you also intend to submit to the Planning Commission. Please limit your remarks to the subject at hand. If you have a written statement or written comments, we ask that you submit the written statement or comments at this time instead of reading the statement or comments into the record. If you have any written materials to submit to the Planning Commission, please hand them to the clerk to distribute at this time. The Planning Commission will have the opportunity to review any written materials and ask any questions. No clapping, cheering, or other out-of-order comments will be allowed. Validations of this rule may cause a room to be cleared. Staff, you ready to make your presentation?
Through the chair, I would make one request that the, when we open, well, the matter's already open, but when they do come up to speak, that we take persons, proponents, for the project first, and those then in opposition, and then give the proponents an opportunity to rebut, as in our standard policies for the Planning Commission, before we close So with that, Chairman Aguilar, Commissioners, if it pleases the Planning Commission, before you today is general plan amendment GPA sixteen dash zero zero five, change of zone PZC sixteen dash zero zero seven, tentative parcel map PPM sixteen dash zero three zero. The Simon, Dutton, Qualls, the Qualls project. This is a summary of requests for recommendation of approval. This is a recommendation we will be making motions on. The ultimate decision will be made by the Board of Supervisors since this is a general plan amendment, so we will be requesting recommendations today. Staff's findings for a recommendation of approval include, first of all, the project complies with CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. County environmental officer approved the initial study and mitigated negative declaration with eleven biological mitigation measures and including a seven point five acre agricultural easement as a condition of approval. The general plan amendment is consistent with the two thousand twelve Tulare County general plan, changing from agricultural to res, rural residential land use designation within the Visalia urban area boundary with a rural valley lands plan score of fifteen with the, with substantial evidence of the project's limited impacts to the rural nature of Tulare County. Three, the change of zone is consistent with the applicable zoning, the zoning code, ordinance code three fifty-two, and the neighborhood in general, which you will see shortly. Tentative parcel map complies with the state subdivision map act and the county subdivision code. The tentative parcel map includes only three parcels, plus or minus two point five acres, and a twenty point one six acre remainder with a final map. Future remainder parcel development would require a final map for the remainder parcel and a certificate of compliance to allow even one residence on the remainder parcel. Any further development of the remainder parcel would require a land division, which would be a subdivision tract map, a general plan amendment, a change of zone, and full Continued summary of requests for recommendation of approval. A recommendation of approval from the RMA director for all easement exceptions for length, width, and bulbed-out truck turnaround areas. There are special and unique circumstances of this case that has led the RMA director to make those findings for approval of the exceptions, and those have been concurred with by the fire department, public works staff, and environmental health in regards to any concerns over safety. The location of the project is east of road one forty and one thousand six hundred and fifty feet south of Avenue three twenty-eight. And here's a closer aerial shot of the site, where you can see the remainder parcel against the seven point five acre parcel map. So the parcel map itself, PPM sixteen dash zero three zero. The project area is twenty-seven point six six acres with the division into three two point five acre parcels, as you can see, located along the top here, on the northern side of the parcel. Seven point five acres would be inclusive of the general plan amendment and the rezone to rural residential, eighty-seven thousand square foot minimum, so we are not amending the general plan or rezoning the remainder parcel. Twenty point one six acres remainder parcel is subject to an ag easement requirement, so the equivalent of seven point five acres will be placed on that remainder parcel to remain in agriculture in perpetuity. There's a, there's two fifty-six foot wide potential easements on either side of parcel one and two. You can see dividing parcel one and two there, and also on the far eastern side, that could be potential easements for turnaround movements for vehicles, or at the very end of the PVAE itself, you'll see the required turnaround area. There is an existing forty-five foot wide PVAE with twenty foot road travel width paved area, which is approximately a half a mile long. General plan consistency findings. The general plan initiation was approved by the Board of Supervisors on June fourteenth, two thousand sixteen. That was general plan, GPI fourteen dash zero zero three. The project itself is located within the city of Visalia urban area boundary, and this goes back to GPA ninety-two dash zero zero seven, and which was confirmed in the two thousand twelve Tulare County general plan with no changes. It's consistent with the general plan policy four point one nine, allowing the rural valley lands plans analysis in the urban area boundary that is advisory, but because of the MOU with the city of Visalia, we have to conduct it, even though it's advisory. The RVLP evaluation of fifteen points is below the seventeen point threshold. There were some concerns raised about water rights that we did look into and we did address, but they did not change the overall analysis points in regards to water because we had already given it the full four points, but we did look into that. And I'll go into that more, in more detail in a second. It's a consistency finding for the planning framework element, section two point four cities, and that requires that we do work with the cities, and that's where our memorandum of understanding comes from. The county general plan has more stringent policies that apply to urban development boundaries, and you can see from this map, the orange-yellowish line being the UDB. Obviously, the UAB is outside of that, so we're not within the UDB. However, the MOU, as stated, does require us to consult with the city of Visalia, and they responded with no comment. Furthermore, as far as zoning consistency findings, it's consistent with the city of Visalia zoning, update two thousand sixteen, and the two thousand fourteen Visalia general plan boundary. As you can see from this map, we are outside of any pre-zoning sphere of influence or any general plan designations from the city of Visalia. So we're outside the city's zoning, so our zoning applies. Furthermore, under zoning consistency findings, one of the requirements of planning is to make sure when you are rezoning a property is consistent with the neighborhood. The area was zoned AE forty in nineteen seventy-eight. The blanket county-wide zoning changed the zoning from AE one, grandfathered AE one zone, to exclusive agriculture zones AE forty. It's, as stated, outside any Visalia general plan pre-designation or pre-zoning areas in the sphere of influence of Visalia. It's rezoning in surrounding parcels are, if you look at this rezoning itself, RA eighty-seven just along for these three parcels, they are consistent with the size and nature of the surrounding parcels, and the RA eighty-seven zones have already been approved just to the east and north of this project. And so it is, if you read section four of our zoning code, RA residential zoning ordinance, this project would be consistent with those, with the rezone. Ordinance numbers twenty-eight seventy-three and three zero zero nine. It is exactly consistent with what was approved under TSM six six nine, the Ray Court Elbow Creek project to the immediate north and east of the project area. It is consistent with fifty-seven of the sixty-one surrounding parcels in the immediate neighborhood within the block itself. Most of parcels, as you can see from this map, are not consistent with the AE forty zoning. In fact, only four get close, and of one of those are still less than forty acres. It's consistent with the neighboring parcels sizes. They were generally created with certificates of compliance just to the north of this project back in nineteen eighty-four, and parcels to the west in nineteen seventy-one, and parcels to the east circa seventeen seventy-three. It is noted the subdivision map act came into place in nineteen seventy-two. As far as CEQA consistency, we did receive one comment from the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District suggesting indirect source review. It is found that the project is less than fifty units, so that the project falls below the rule ninety-five-ten threshold found by Jessica Willis, Tulare County air quality expert. As far as agriculture, the conversion of, conversion of agricultural land condition of approval sixteen is in fulfillment of the county's required ag mitigation policy for one-to-one mitigation. As far as traffic, I'd start off with there is no impact to any of Caltrans facilities, so we got a no comment letter from Caltrans. Furthermore, under traffic, impacts to intersections and segments is a typical traffic study. In this case, Omni means did a trip generationist study along the PVA and intersections, and they concluded there was twenty-nine daily trips, two morning peak and three evening peak trips, and found no impacts to level of service or safety. The general plan of the county only requires a traffic to impact study if it's over one hundred peak hour trips and/or no loss of level of service, which didn't apply in either one of those cases. Safety concerns are backed by substantial evidence in the findings by the traffic consultant and the county fire and public works, who are satisfied with the PVA with minor adjustments suggested, recommended, not necessary. The American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, the ASHTO standards for very low-volume roads, three hundred trips or less, allows a two, two ten-foot travel lanes, which are consistent and well within the complete street standards, which this planning commission has recommended for approval time and time again of the county. The Office of Planning Research sent a late letter notice because California Department of Fish and Wildlife comments were provided late to the county, but we incorporate them regardless, and California Department of Fish and Wildlife's comments suggested clarifications to biological mitigation measures, which were in the record under resolution, conditions of approval five through fifteen, which have been incorporated. As far as aesthetics, it is noted that the surrounding aesthetics are, for the most part, rural residential, which began in the early seventies and slowly densified with the land, with much of those residents being screened by landscaping around all the residential lots. The block is built out at roughly sixty units, three hundred and sixty acres, or one, for sixty units for three hundred and sixty acres. So that's about one unit per six acres. The project is limited to three residential lots and will have less than an impact to the aesthetics, given those findings. In regards to water, water was a concern we addressed in, with substantial evidence in the record. The applicant hired Ken Schmidt. Ken Schmidt concluded there would be sustainable water levels. He started off by saying that the, there would be over time increased stabilization under the SIGMA, the Groundwater Management Act, and that was based on his review of the well logs. Most of those wells, water were sitting anywhere from thirty to ninety feet deep. Water level maps from DWR's COW, CASGIM program showed that even at a decrease of point eight feet per year, if SIGMA is not necessarily successful, that's only twenty-four feet over thirty years, and that's the time it's taken for this whole area to develop out to where we're at now. So another thirty years from now, the impact would be less than significant at those rates, as you would still be able to provide sustainable pumping anywhere from thirty to ninety feet. Staff finds the project would have to comply with the new LAMP, local agency management program standards that this planning commission reviewed and recommended for approval a few months back. That would further restrict impacts to groundwater is in compliance with the California, the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board standards. As stated before, through the RVLP process, we did analyze the water rights as requested to Matthew's ditch, which actually belongs to the owners of the property. They don't run with the land, and that's according to Larry Dodson of the Quea Delta Conservation District, and that was confirmed by Linda Criswell, the bookkeeper for the Consolidated Peoples' Ditch Company. Any existing water easements, which were also a concern, would not be extinguished by the project itself and would be required to be shown on the final map, as all easements are required to be shown on the final map. In regards to values or growth-inducing impacts, lowering values of properties, there were some questions or concerns about that. Valuation arguments in CEQA without evidence are speculative. Since the impacts to aesthetics and infrastructure are less than significant, the values of these properties would not likely change due to any physical changes created by the addition of three lots. There is no information offered by anyone in the record as to the net increase or decrease of the properties due to additional units or as to any physical effect thereof, and that's the analysis that's required under CEQA. So there hasn't been any evidence proffered by anybody in the record in regards to valuation. There are no additional entitlements being considered at this time, as much as opposition would say. There are no additional entitlements being considered at this time, as much as opposition would say there is or are. We've been working on this project for four years, really. And this is what we thought would not necessarily require a full environmental impact report. This project is what we thought would be the limited, most limited impact possible for this property. So there are no additional entitlements being considered at this time. This area has developed out slowly over time with no new entitlements considered since 1988. That's over 30, that's 30 years ago. Any additional proposed development project would require going through the entire process again, as I've stated. Therefore, potential growth would not lead to lessening property values. And the argument that potential growth inducing impacts would lead to lessening values is much more speculative than just a valuation argument. So this is the central issue, it's really about the easements. For the record, there is no limit to the amount of units or parcels allowed along a PVAE in Tulare County under subdivision code section 7-01-100 at SEC. We don't limit that and some people might be a little surprised by that. But the reality is, most driveways serve multifamily residential as much as they serve a single lot in a rural residential area. Now, the county does have a policy, if more than four parcels, then typically we apply the class one standard width and would apply. That's 32 feet paved width in a 56-foot wide easement. And that's section 7-01-223 unless exceptions apply. And as we've stated, the RMA director said that the sections do apply. Because of the current 20-foot wide asphalt surface within a 45-foot wide PVAE, which is also the subject of a memorandum of agreement between the landowners acknowledging the 45-foot wide easement, which is part of our unusual circumstances here, exists and has been found sufficient through the RMA findings for all the exceptions as required. It is noted that the neighboring PVAEs, if you look out to the west here, they are only 40-foot wide, 20 feet on either side of the property line, and have 20-foot wide or less semi-developed roads. So in this case, for eight homes, eight parcels, or more homes. And down here, seven parcels are on the same PVAE without going to the class one facility size. If you look at the surrounding parcels, obviously that's not 20 feet wide and definitely not much more developed than laying some asphalt and oil. And not necessarily all asphalt and oil, as some of the surrounding properties are dirt and/or gravel. So barely all-weather surfaces. To the east, it's a little bit more interesting. The neighboring PVAEs are 40-foot wide or less. It's tough to see on the APN maps because they're not on there. With 20-foot wide or less developed roads for five or more parcels, in this case, there's eight. And in this case, there's five. So it is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. The surrounding private vehicle access easement is far less than 20 feet. Some areas actually goes out to 20 feet in others. But for the most part, they're narrow, dirt and gravel at the ends, so not necessarily all-weather surfaces in all cases. The Clary property, PVA turn, was also a concern of the opposition. As you can see, Mr. Clary's property does sit right along the edge of the PVAE, the residence itself. As you can see, the view from the kitchen window. And he has shown the easement itself, right outside his window. I'll show you in a second, it's not necessarily right there, but it is fairly close at the 45-foot width, much less 56-feet width. So if we do not grant the exception, then this would overly, and we do go forward with the project. And he does have to build out, the applicant does have to build out the full 32-foot wide paved area within a 56-foot wide easement, that would definitely burden this property. Another one of the unique circumstances that the residence is actually built so close to the PVAE. You can see from this map, there is, if you look at Clary's actual property, it goes pretty much all the way to this property line, which is within, the PVAE is within, which gives about 10 feet along the parcel on the edge, this will be important in a second. So we, RMA's public work staff looked pretty in-depth at the relationship between the residence and this turn here. Now, it's also of note that right along this property line runs from north to south, the Matthews Ditch. And that's another aspect of this project that would limit the full development of the travel width and the PVAE itself. So these are pictures that Mr. Clary took and that we considered as an alternative for a 90, as he put, a 90-degree curve. That's not quite the case. But we found that no exceptions are required for this turn. It is consistent with the ASHTO standards. And in a second, you'll see it's also consistent with something like the city of Isalia standards. Like I said, we did some pretty in-depth analysis of that turn. Really, all that's required is about 24 feet on the turning radius, which is in the existing condition. And actually, you'll see in a second, it actually juts out to about 29 feet. It is recommended, it is recommended. And if it is possible that they get a full 28-foot paved area to encompass that whole area. And if Clary was willing to accommodate the applicant and trade off the 10 feet in front of the house for 10 feet on the back of the property, that would be ideal. Again, this is suggested, recommended, not required. But that would, that would give an elevated safety factor. But fire department and public works were okay with the existing condition. And here's a picture of two cars passing each other on the driveway itself, on the PVAE. Here's the turning area itself, if one car is to pull off further into that area. As I said, it juts out to about 29-plus feet in that area. There's plenty of room for emergency vehicles to pass and another vehicle to pass. Like I was saying, 28 feet would be ideal. We already achieved 29 feet within that area. But as you'll see in a second, even the city of Isalia allows you to go down to 24 feet. And here, you can see in this graphic, the 45-foot wide PVAE as it sits, sits about 10 feet from the house. If you go out to 56 feet, basically 11 feet, five and a half on each side, you'd be right along the residence itself, about halfway, halfway through there. So not, if it was required, it would definitely be a burden to that property. They would lose any of their property along here if they were amenable to moving it over. If they're not, we're okay with the existing condition, but they could also go closer to the house if need be. Either way, county staff doesn't think it's required, so why force the issue by moving the PVAE or the travel width itself? As an example of previous exceptions, the planning commission has made back in 1988 for Elbow Creek, they granted exceptions for the length of the PVAE. And they also granted exceptions for drainage, finding that there was sufficient land on each one of these lots to allow for it. So we have a history of making such exceptions for projects. But most importantly, they found, similar to what we're finding, that the special circumstances or conditions affecting the property were the rationale for making those exceptions. So similar to us, it's the conditions of the existing property that, and agreements that make for the special circumstances. You can see this was approved in 1988 by the planning commission at that time. So we were asked to look to other jurisdictions and what they do. We didn't have to look too far. The city of Isalia allows, and all that is required is that the roadway conform with the design speed, the traffic volume, alignment, and parking conditions. So that really allows the ASHTO standards, engineering standards to prevail over whatever is set in the code. The only time they actually require the full build-out of that street section, you can see here, of 24 feet, is if there is perpendicular parking on each side of the roadways. Obviously, we don't have parking requirements for this PVAE, so there's no reason to even go to a 24-foot standard. But they do allow for the adjustment. They further find in the city of Isalia standards that the uniform fire code really only requires a 14-foot wide paved area, but they need 20 feet wide, especially if you're going to a two-story building. So even some of the surrounding neighborhood, all-weather travel ways would be sufficient. Most importantly, though, how many units do they consider for one of these type of multifamily projects that would require these standards? It's about 150 units. That's what that paved section, the depth of the roadway and everything else is built for. So, you know, obviously, in this case, we're only talking three units. Again, driveways go to one unit out in rural areas, driveways go to multifamily apartment complexes. So we've made exceptions all around those types of projects. So under our subdivision ordinance, the RMA director makes the findings for the class one facility unless there are exceptions. In this case, there are. The planning director makes the findings to assist the planning commission and board of supervisors in granting the exceptions. The below exceptions in perens were granted by the, by classification from this commission from 2010 to 2018. The first is the lot exceptions. Lots shall be served by a 40-foot frontage street. The exception is found to be appropriate as the parent parcel does not have direct access to any frontage streets. Those have been found consistently in PPM 15-008, 08-057, 08-082, 14-027, and 15-003. The second exception, parcel served by an accepted class one facility easement, being 56 feet wide in width to the 45 existing easement width or less. And some of these exceptions is PPM 11-010 through PPM 16-028, inclusive of 15-038. The third exception, 10 parcels served by an accepted class one facility pavement width of 32 feet wide to 20 feet wide has been found in previous projects, PPM 10-036, 10-046, 11-010, 13-005, 14-043, 15-003, 15-006, 038, and 028. Is less than 10 acres in areas and therefore the length of the easement shall not exceed 660 feet in non-mountainous areas. The planning commission has found in these projects, consistently with this project, that the exception applies in PPM 09-053, 09-038, 10-036, 10-047, 11-010, 13-005, and 17-030. All right, so less than 660 feet cul-de-sacs, as shown in plate A2 of section four, has been accepted in previous projects, including the Elbow Creek, which we just showed you. The existing PVAE directly exceeds the 600, already exceeds the 660 feet from Avenue 328. Therefore, the extended length of the PVAE is unavoidable. And that was also found consistently with that Elbow Creek project. The exception is appropriate because the project will provide a modified turnaround to be offset, not exactly on center, so it only goes on the applicant's property, as depicted on the tentative parcel map. Now, those are the planning commission's previous decisions and those are the exceptions I've laid out. The next part of this is the findings the RMA director has to make, and they have to make all of these for these exceptions to be approved. And this is the recommendation. There are four special circumstances or conditions affecting the property. A portion of the existing private road is positioned within a 45-foot wide by 1,288-foot-long easement owned by the applicant themselves. The frontage road, no, frontage road, the road going, the PVAE going from north to south, when you first get into the property, is owned by the applicant, which is currently used by all the existing residents. And that was recorded in 1978, well before they purchased their properties. The dominant, non-exclusive easement, serving all the properties south of that portion of the PVAE, was also recorded in 1978 and serves all six of these parcels. But staff finds that the property owners would not, and I think it's well-known in the record, would not agree on allowing the applicant to purchase the full 56-foot-wide PVAE to satisfy the class one roadway sections, making purchasing the full PVAE impossible. An agreement exists between all the owners of the properties recognizing the easement at 45 feet in width. And the development potential of these properties is also recognized in this agreement. And they have the right to oppose any of those projects also within this agreement. Matthews Ditch, as stated before, exists directly on the west side of the property, limiting development of the PVAE further. The RMA director further finds that the exceptions are appropriate because the exceptions are appropriate for the proper design or function of the subdivision. Given that the existing private roadway is approximately 20 feet in width, that is consistent with the existing private easements on the surrounding properties, which are less than 20 feet and serve more than five lots, and is consistent with the fire code and public roads in Tulare County, and as I said before, even in the city of Isalia. As an example, county rights of way are less than 45 feet, generally 40 feet wide on Avenue 360, Avenue 224, Road 140. And the commission granted self-help Goshen East Village in 2014, many more exceptions to the 56-foot-wide PVAE. Like I said, it applies in rural areas and applies for multifamily housing as well. The RMA director finds that the exceptions are appropriate because the granting of the exceptions will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property in the area in which the property is situated because other agencies have standards that have been found to be consistent with the engineering safety standards for less than 20-foot wide roads, see ASHTO. Granting an exception to a lesser roadway with standard for roads serving now potentially nine residents would not be detrimental. We're talking three more lots. Approving the project would merely increase the volume on the road by 29 daily trips, you can do the math, with 2 a.m. and 3 p.m. trips, but not enough to overly burden the easement, as been argued by opposition, or exceed any SEQA or county general plan thresholds. As stated before, we need 100 peak timed trips to require a traffic impact study under the general plan. So we've pushed the applicant, we believe, to go beyond in regards to their studies. And would be consistent with other neighboring roadways and rights of way within the county. The traffic expert, Omni Means, found that the proposed project would not increase hazards or emergency access. There is a question under the SEQA guidelines in regards to safety or hazards. There is a question under the SEQA guidelines in regards to safety or hazards, and Omni Means themselves found that it would not increase hazards or emergency access difficulties or decrease the performance or safety of the facility. The RMA director finds that the exceptions are appropriate because the granting of the exception is in accordance with the purposes described in Article One of this chapter, being the subdivision code of the county and the subdivision map act generally. The California subdivision map act only requires access to properties generally, that's it. It doesn't say how wide, it doesn't say how long, that we do not landlocked properties. That's the point of the act. The county, the PVAE, the county, on the other hand, the PVAE as it is constructed would provide access in county, would provide access, and the county road standards, plate number A one, are based on providing not only access but parking, sidewalks, gutter, and curbs, and a variable travel width of twelve feet on each side. The county finds that the tentative map does not require sidewalks, curb, or gutter for PVAEs not within an urban development boundary, so the travel width of around twenty feet would be sufficient. The RMA director finds that the exceptions are appropriate because the granting of the exception is consistent with the general plan, and we've already made our general plan consistency findings, but granting the exception would also be consistent because without the exceptions, this project would not move forward, and the general plan and state planning law requires meeting the need of the statewide housing goals. We are in a housing deficiency in this county, and this would also help us at least provide three more units. Granting an exception is consistent with the general plan because the project is properly updating the general plan, they've gone through the whole process, they've done this right, they're not asking for certificates of compliance, you know, we just passed four parcel maps earlier today, and if this project didn't require all this, it probably would have gone through a little bit more saliently, but it does require all this. So it is going to be consistent with the general plan once the general plan amendment is approved, and zoning as well, consistent with the county general plan and zoning policies, and has been found consistent by county agencies to not be detrimental to the health and safety of the surrounding neighbors. And that concludes staff's presentation. I am here to answer any questions, as is two of our public works engineers, as well as the rest of staff, county council, but the applicant brought their agent as well, and I think they would like to make a presentation once you open the public hearing.
Mr. Chair? Can I ask for a senior citizen break, please?
Yeah, but are there any questions of staff before we do?
Just real quick, Aaron, is there a maintenance agreement on this PVAE with all the people? Who maintains it?
I would like the staff, I would like the applicant to answer that question. I didn't read necessarily that far into the agreement where it actually states anything about that, but the way easements work, there is usually some agreement in place for the maintenance of roadways and is would be required by law, so, but I'd like the applicant and opposition to answer that question.
Anyone else? Then we'll take a short break, let's say to ten twenty, and we'll reconvene at that point. Okay, we will reconvene. Were you gonna say something else?
Oh, no, I was just not.
Okay, we will now take comments from members of the public. to speak. You will have a timer up on top, and we will adhere to that time limit. The only exception to this limit will be at my discretion. You may not yield your time to others or reserve time to speak again. Because we might have a number of interested parties here, we request that you do not restate or repeat comments. Testimony or information or duplicate any comments, testimony, or evidence given by a speaker before you, and that you do not read extensively from written materials that you also intend to submit to the planning commission. Please limit your remarks to the subject at hand. Again, if you have a written statement or written comments, we ask that you submit the written statement or comments instead of reading the statement or comments into the record. Planning commission will have the opportunity to review any written materials and ask any questions. If you have any written materials to submit to the planning commission, please hand them to the clerk to distribute, and I know we've been handed one already. The materials will become public record and the property of the county. If you need a copy, you may request one from the clerk after the meeting is over. Again, please remember, no clapping, cheering, or out-of-order comments will be allowed. Violation of this rule may cause a room to be cleared. Please address all questions to me and not to any individual commissioner, staff members, or any other person. I will ask for any response we believe needed. The public testimony of this public hearing is now open. And again, we're going to start with the proponents first, so please state your name and address.
Good morning, Chairman Aguilar and commissioners. My name is Alex Thompson. My address is one hundred Willow Plaza, Suite three hundred in Visalia. I am with the firm that represents the quals, and we've represented them for several years in different legal matters, and I've been asked to come here to speak to you today about some of the history that sort of affects this, this project. And just to give you kind of an idea of what's occurred so far, my clients have spent significant amounts of time and money to improve the property that's at question. You'll notice that there's that north and south roadway that goes from basically Avenue three twenty-eight down to the parcels. That land is owned by my clients, and there's easements over for access, and they've spent a lot of money in trimming the trees, putting up fences, and also doing some pavement work and grading work to take care of that property. And part of that, taking care of that property resulted in a lawsuit, and they eventually prevailed in that one, which allowed them to keep off unauthorized persons off of that easement, and so now easement's only for those people who live out there and they're guests. Another source of litigation that we've represented them in is from the five lot owners, and you saw that, it looks like it's an incomplete development, and so that those, those lot owners of those five that are there have actually sued my clients, and they've sought to restrict that easement. And we eventually settled that case, and part of that agreement you heard about, part of that agreement allows the stuff that's been placed in the forty-five-foot easements, so some landscaping and things like that, to be removed if development occurs. And so my clients have repeatedly sought to make that as wide as possible and tried to keep it as safe as possible, but they've met resistance along the way. And there was some legal question about, well, how can a property owner such as my client subdivide their property and allow other persons to cross somebody else's property on an easement? Well, the case law actually provides for that. I had submitted a, a letter, and in that letter, I've cited a couple of cases, and one is the case Hill versus Allen, and that's found, the citation, the legal citation for that is two fifty-nine Cal App two D four seventy. And in that case, I'm sorry, I'm running a little bit out of time, may I finish describing these two cases?
This is a summary, yeah, well-
This is kind of a history, right?
I'll extend.
Thank you, chairman. I'll make it quick. Anyway, in the Allen, or in the Hill versus Allen case, the court found that there was a subdivision of these one hundred and twenty acres, and there had been a pre-existing easement there, and that subdivision would, in essence, create twenty-four residential additional residences there. And the court found that that really wasn't overburdening this easement and allowed it to happen. Now, let me give you an example of where that wasn't allowed to happen. Well, this is kind of a funny case, it's Bartholomew versus Stahelil, and that's found at eighty-six Cal App two D eight four four, and in that case, there was a parcel which had a ranch house and a barn on it, and it'd been used for a family residence and for farming operations for a while. Well, the new owner decided to turn it into a nudist colony, and they found that two hundred or five hundred cars a day coming in and out, well, that wasn't appropriate, and so they didn't allow those rights to continue for the easement access for whoever was using the property. And so in this instance, my clients have a piece of property, and there's only going to be three additional residences on there, and you've heard that the traffic study report identified only, I believe, less than thirty daily trips, which is far lower than what occurred in the Bartholomew case. And counsel, if I can, or, excuse me, commissioners, if I can just answer that question about the maintenance agreement that was presented earlier, each, besides that north-south road that my clients have taken care of, graded and weeded and spent time and money trimming trees and putting up a fence on those areas, they have maintained that easement, and they've maintained the easement in front of their property. And as you're aware, the landowners, as you go south in that easement that's going sort of towards the mountains, that easement, the property owners own up to the middle of the road, and so they're responsible for care of what is on that property. And with that, commissioners, if you have any questions about some of the things that I've talked about, I'd be happy to take them, otherwise, thank you.
Can I answer your question on that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others for the project? Then at this time, we will continue with those opposed projects, so again, please state your name and address.
My name is Phil Clary, and I live at thirteen four oh one, I'm at House H. I'm the one at the corner over there that we've been talking about the road. Before we get started, I just want to compliment the planning commission or the Mr. Bach and his staff in resolving almost all of the concerns that we've had during this project. There's been a lot of angst and a lot of unknown questions and issues that we're trying to deal with. Someplace about this far into your packet is my letter. I would encourage you to read it and take a look at it. The issues that we see remaining in this, in this case, they've done a fantastic job of dealing with the exceptions. I have no problem with the exceptions. The issue is, is that in, in the comments here, it says that we have nev- that we have not agreed, or, excuse me, we have not cooperated or even been able to talk to them about any side agreements about purchasing extra land. They've never asked. They've never wanted to come to us and talk to us. That's fine. So it's left a lot of angst in this process. We've had two court, or we've had one court case, and, and, and it really worked out for, for both parties, just leave us all alone. They have done a fantastic job of dealing with our issues. The only remaining issues that we have are the easements across my property, because you can see by the size of it, on the far right-hand side, on the west side of it, the whole property. If you develop more than, more than three parcels, and the whole discussion has been, is that a subdivision back there? If you put more than six, more than three parcels back there, now you have a traffic issue by my house. All my letter is discussing a development back there, and based upon what I've heard this morning and what staff has done, they basically said, that's not going to happen, and I feel comfortable with that. And if they do want to develop it, they gotta go through this whole process again, and, and I'm cool with that. The issue is, there are easement issues. In your packet, it says they have a non-exclusive easement. They do not. I have a reserved grantor ingress and egress, and so do all the other property owners. They have not come and asked us what we can do, what we can work out. So with my remaining minutes, the issues that we see are easement, and it's probably going to end up in court because that's just how this works, we don't want it to be that way, but that's probably what it's going to be, and the maintenance of the road. We currently deal with the road and the maintenance of the road. If you put more than three properties back there, then we're going to have to talk about the county taking over the road. But right now, they did a fantastic job, and I have no issues with it, other than the easement issues and the cooperation issue. Now, if I may, I got a letter from our, one of the other homeowners who could not be here today, and they were never notified of this whole process, so if I could put this in the, in the packet, I would appreciate that. They're House H. I'm Ha- no, they're House S, I'm House H. With that, any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clary, I'm sorry, could you come back? I do have a quick question there. I saw a photo of some flooding, or not so much flooding, but water ponding up around it. Is that right at your corner? Is that where that occurs?
That's next to the ditch. What the, what the quals have done is they've raised their property so that it doesn't drain properly towards the, towards the road, and I'm not going to get in a fight with them, so it just sits there and is deteriorating the road because they refuse to allow me to let it drain properly. But yes, there is a huge pond between the, between the ditch and the road, on the west side of my property.
Right, thank you.
Aaron, what's the name of the party this letter's from?
Tadlock was not notified, but-
Adlock?
Lock or Tadlock?
They're not one of the five properties.
Well, it's, as far as the notice radius, they were, I can't say if they actually received it or, or not, but yes, they were one of the APNs that were notified, so I can't talk to the mail or service.
Will the issue of the easement rights be addressed at some point, the ones you brought up?
That is through the chair. I don't believe that's within our jurisdiction. I think that's, as Mr. Clary said, may be a court decision in the future, but, or it might be subject to coordination and agreements amongst all the parties, but all we can do is grant the exceptions, and all we can do is grant approval of the three lots and the remainder.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come back? We'll hold on for, will there be any others that, that want to address the commission?
I'm Nancy Vreeland. I live at one three four oh one Avenue three twenty-eight. In regards to our neighbors, the Tadlocks, not getting any information, we have filled them in, the neighbors have filled them in with copies of our letters that we have gotten. I did notice on the map, in that six hundred and thirty-six pages, as to who they notified, there was another neighbor that had, they had their name and address, and it was the incorrect owners. The people that lived there have passed away years ago, and the property has been sold. In regards to the water situation and the information that RMA gathered, it said that most of the wells are thirty to ninety feet, and that that should be sufficient for twenty-four years. If so, we've got a problem because everyone, including us, all of our neighbors, are sitting at two hundred feet or greater because we've had to put in new wells because of the drought. And the except- And the exceptions being made, just because they've been made in the past is not a good reason to repeat them in the future. If you drive in some of the areas out there, you can see the deterioration in the roads, the narrow roads, and that doesn't make, it doesn't look good. And again, consideration as to who will maintain the road once, if the subdivision is approved, who's going to maintain that, the road with the subdivision? As it stands now, with the lawsuit, the agreement was whoever starts to do something on the road, like if we were to start paving the road, we would be responsible to pay for the whole thing, unless someone else decided to jump in. What's that going to do with new people in there? Are they going to have a clause in there about maintaining the road? Or will whoever does the subdividing, will they continue maintaining the road? Also, we have an easement for ditch water on the east side of our property. I know that hasn't been addressed yet, so I'm kind of worried about that. Thank you.
Through the chair, as far as the easement, as stated, if there is an easement, a recorded easement, it would be placed on the final map, as I stated previously. As far as the groundwater, and we don't necessarily look at all drought conditions, we look at averages. Exceptions don't make the rule. But as stated as well, the whole reason for Sigma is so that the droughts don't impact the water availability over the long term. So, there was a finding that with Sigma, that they should stabilize the groundwater over the long term, that's the purpose of it. But it's not saying that there might not be an exceptional, exceptional situation where that, that rule of 30 to 90 feet would not apply. But Ken Schmidt is a, is an expert, one of the highest qualified experts in Tulare County, and he made a finding that that was less than significant impact to add only three more residential lots. So, we go with his finding, unless there's anything you'd like to add, Mr. Gara. I believe that finding was sufficient. So, as far as the easements and the maintenance, like I stated, that's really outside of our jurisdiction. It was an unusual circumstance that helped make the finding for the exceptions, that they do have that agreement in place. But as far as the substance of it and who maintains that, again, that's, that's not what we're here today to talk about. And unless you have any other...
One statement I might make there. I think testimony was that the wells not necessarily were from 30 to 90, it was standing the water table, right? Is that what it was, from 30 to 90 feet?
If you look at the CASGIM over the whole area, like, as you well know, Commissioner, I could be right next door to you, and I could be sitting at 90 feet, and you could be at 30 or 200. So, nobody truly, absolutely ever really knows what's going on with the aquifer. But as far as the CASGIM studies that were provided, they had, if you read through that document in detail, it does show 30 to 90 feet generally. And we look at average, we don't necessarily look at exceptional circumstances. You know, if we, and that's sufficient industry standard study, but again, it was Ken Schmidt, so we'll take his expert testimony, that that is sufficient.
I think, you know, her testimony that many of the wells are 200 feet, so if Sigma can stabilize the overdraft in, those homes should, should be in good shape for many, many years to go.
And as a member of a technical advisory committee, I would tell you that if they, if they don't, if they're not at sustainable levels over a certain area where the GSAs are, then they would be found not in compliance. So, what happens then? So, yes, over the long term, over the course of 30 years, if we only lose 24 feet, it's not overall an issue. But again, the, the exceptions don't make the rule.
Do we have any others? No, I'll come back to him. I get, I get to set the rules here.
Well, good morning. I'm Tricia Stever Blattler. I represent the Tulare County Farm Bureau, who will from time to time weigh in on projects of this nature that particularly involve property owners that may be unable to settle their challenges. And certainly, this project has a long history of neighbors that unfortunately have not been able to settle their challenges without legal intervention and, and spending a lot of resources. So, I will first characterize my remarks, that I've, I've seen an interesting shift in the conversation, and here, just this morning, Mr. Clary's remarks seemed to give me some hope that quite a bit of the neighboring concerns have been addressed. And I, I too compliment the county RMA staff, because I read the 636 pages last week and found a tremendous amount of rigor and commitment to trying to answer and address some of these questions. As far as the Farm Bureau is concerned, we have established land use policies that I, as their representative, are asked to uphold and, and, you know, propose and support when, when parcelization occurs, especially in these rural developments where there's still, you know, viable agricultural parcels that are on the edge of our rural residential already has been and will be going. Sustainable Groundwater Management Act has been mentioned, and although Mr. Schmidt certainly is an expert in characterizing the well logs and the historical data associated with this area, we anticipate that the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act is going to take roughly the next 20-year horizon to reverse some of these undesirable conditions. And so, you know, we have neighbors explaining and coming to the Farm Bureau saying, my wells already had to be lowered, and I'm at 200 feet or 300 feet, or wherever they are. And I know they have that concern, that more parcelization of this rural area is going to re-characterize this neighborhood in a manner that's going to make it less sustainable for all those households. I also, as the Farm Bureau would raise the question of how the 7.5 acre ag conservation easement will lend itself to continuing in perpetuity an agricultural presence of that neighborhood. It seems like with Sigma coming down the pipeline, it is less likely that that land will be viable for farming. And, and how will that 7.5 acres maintain a viable agricultural productivity if there are restrictions through Sigma, and there are restrictions placed on those neighboring, you know, residential properties? Farm Bureau remains concerned, and we have issued letters in the past opposing this type of development. We probably would have opposed the certificates of compliance that were issued into this process 30 years ago, because we are never in favor of parcelization, where we introduce more density and more neighbors to an area that was rurally characterized for agriculture and had been agriculturally zoned for 40-acre parcels. So, we remain concerned. We issue our concern of opposition, and we do hope that the neighborhood can continue to thrive, and some of these issues can be resolved. Mr. Hoviler is one of our Farm Bureau members, and I believe his wife has issued their written comments to the clerk. So, I will end there. Thank you.
To address the issue about Sigma, you know, over its implementation over 20 years, the intent is to stabilize the impacts to groundwater. The issue is that, you know, it's gonna, kind of like AB 32, it's gonna look at a previous history of where the water was at. So, in the future, new applications of water will be harder to get for wells. There is an existing well on the site. There are water rights that already exist, surface water rights. So, it would and could be a viable portion of another agricultural property. We would foresee putting it along the southern boundary next to the existing agriculture. So, does the remaining parcels stay agriculture? Well, we can only speak so much to people's property rights at that point. There are suggestions that large swaths of land are going to be laid fallow through, through Sigma. Does this become fallow? That's a little bit far-reaching and speculative for us to really look into as far as sequo, much less for a parcel map.
Are there any others? We'll wait to see if there's any more there.
My name is Kathy Hoviler. I live at 13401B Avenue 328. I'm one of the residents. I've already submitted my husband's comments, because he could not be here today. My only comment at this point would be that we are asking for either a delay on this decision until the easement issues have been addressed in their legal fashion, or that any other negotiation could further be done. It would greatly affect whether this project, with exceptions or not, to further go through. I don't see the point in approving this project to go at this point if that issue, and those issues have not been resolved, rendering this process useless. So, I would ask for either denial or at least a continuance, a delay on the decision until those issues are met. Thank you.
Through the chair, I believe it was Rod who called Dana Metlin and said he'd see us at the board and see us in court. So, I, I think we're just making a recommendation today, and let that be worked out between the recommendation and the board's decision. Since we know where this can potentially go, I don't see any real means in which we work this out any, anytime soon. So, I, I don't think it's our position right now to, to really hold back this, this process.
Everyone does understand that we recommend, we actually are not approving, and our recommendation goes to the board, and there's your time. So, next, move it to the next level is the benefit of everybody, I think. But anyway, that's kind of what we said.
Well, yes, it would obviously be an unreasonable cost to delay, delay the process.
Any others?
I was gonna just, I was gonna ask for a delay, but she did it wrong.
Okay. Then we'll have Alex come back.
As far as the easement issues, I think I've addressed that with the presentation of those two cases, and I feel like this project would fall in that case that it would be permissible to allow a property owner to subdivide a property and have them use the continuing easements, and that's not an issue. As far as waiting, I don't think the commission should wait. Generally, the law is retroactive in nature, and so, I don't know who's going to bring a suit. Are we going to wait till the end of time, or who's going to bring a lawsuit unless something actually happens? And so, I think by waiting or putting that condition on it, the commission could potentially kick this out into some indefinite amount of time. For the benefit and the fairness of my clients, I think we should go forward with the recommendation. I just want to, two points Mr. Clary brought up, that there were some issues about flooding. I think the commission actually brought that up. Well, I reached out to Mr. Clary's attorney, and I, I asked them, hey, this road is, you know, has suffered, and could you please grade it to what the historical grading was? And we got a big no from the attorney. So, our clients have really tried to accommodate and to try to make the easement in the road graded sufficiently to provide proper drainage as what was historically done to the property. So, that shouldn't be an issue. As to Ms. Vreeland's comments about the settlement agreement, her reading of it, it's very different than mine. I don't believe it says that if you fix a tiny portion of it, you have to fix the entire thing. That's not something that I'm familiar with, so that's completely new to me. And with those three points I'll submit, thank you, Commissioner.
There are no additional comments? Oh, close the public comment time? And do any commissioners have any additional questions?
I think I would agree that we probably have to do some action here rather than delay, because nothing, nothing will happen if we pick the can down the road. So, we need to start the ball rolling at this point in time.
Yeah, and I think they can continue trying to come up with an agreement, even if we're part of this with their recommendation.
They probably ought to get together on some, some road maintenance agreement, and everybody signs on, everybody kicks in the kitty and get it fixed.
This is an old subdivision. I mean, it goes back to Gene Smith, and, you know, I've been a planning commissioner 20 years. I'm also a developer. This reminds me of, you piecemeal it. And so, I don't know what Gene Smith was thinking 30 years ago, maybe, maybe 35 years ago. And so, this is what happens when we do little pieces at a time, because then it, you know, easements are not agreed to, and so, you know, I have my lot, but I don't want anybody else to have a lot, because it's going to increase the traffic and cause this problem, which I'm not saying that it might not. But for, so therefore, I will make a motion that we deny this project, but that's not what you have up before me, that we not recommend to the Board of Supervisors to certify and adopt the mitigated negative declaration consistent with California Environmental Quality Act and State Sequo and adopt and not adopt a, I can't see the, for mitigated monitoring and reporting program for GPA 16-005 and PCC 16-007 and PPM 16-030. And so, how many, how many motions do we need?
We are going to make five motions today. Each one is a separate motion, and so, we would start with motion number one.
Mine is to not recommend that we do this project.
Well, let's start with motion number one.
That's number one, wasn't it?
Well, no. Motion number one would be a recommendation of the Board of Supervisors certify and adopt the mitigated negative declaration consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the State Sequo guidelines. So, you're saying the M and D was not sufficient?
I don't like it, so I don't know how else to say it. I know I can't make a motion based on how I feel, but it's, there's too many loose ends, and so...
But the first motion says to the sufficiency of the environmental document.
I just withdraw my motion, because I, I don't like it, so...
Good.
Commissioner Whitlatch, you can make a, the reason we have it divided up is basically for our personal protocol and how we prefer to do it. You can make a motion to deny the whole thing, the whole project. You can make...
I will make that motion that we deny the whole project.
But it has to be seconded in order for it to...
I know, but I'm just starting the ball.
So, yeah, the motion on the table is to deny the whole project.
I'll second that. Take your vote?
No.
Millie?
No.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
No.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Itigliano?
No.
Aguilar?
No.
The motion?
So, the motion to, motion failed to deny the whole project, so now we can go back to see if we have a motion on these...
I would suggest taking it in each motion, each five motions.
Thank you. We have them up on top if you want to, if somebody wants to make a motion.
I'll make that first recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, that we certify and adopt the mitigated negative declaration consistent with the California Environmental Act and the State Sequo guideline, and adopt the mitigating monitoring and reporting program for GPA 16-005, PCC 16-007, and PPM 16-030. sixteen dash zero zero seven, and PPM sixteen dash zero three zero.
I'll second the motion.
Gong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
No.
Patiglano? Aguilar?
Yes.
So that motion passes. Now we can go to the next one?
I'll make the motion that we approve, recommend to the board of supervisors, approve general plan amendment number GPA sixteen double zero five to change the land use designation from agriculture to rural residential on a seven point five acre parcel or portion of a twenty-seven point six six acre parcel.
I'll second.
Gong?
No.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
No.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch? Patiglano? Aguilar?
Yes.
What was the total?
Four votes yes.
Four three. So that, that motion passes as well. We'll go to the third one. I'll recommend to the board of supervisors approve zone change number PCC sixteen dash zero zero seven on a seven and a half acre portion of a twenty-seven point six six acre parcel from the AE forty exclusive ag to RA eighty-seven, rural residential, eighty-seven thousand square foot minimum. Do I continue with it, with the, not with four, or what?
That was it?
What?
No, that's separate.
That's it? Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Oco?
Gong?
No.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
No.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch? Patiglano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
That again is a four to three, so that motion passes as well. Go to the fourth one?
I recommend the board, I make a motion to recommend the board of supervisors conditionally approve tentative parcel map number PPM one six dash zero three zero with the requirement to file a final map.
Through the chair with, with exceptions.
With exceptions, thank you.
I'll second.
Oco?
Gong?
No.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
No.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch? Patiglano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
We'll go to the final one?
Through the chair, the motion?
Motion pass, I'm sorry. Four to three. We'll go to the final one? I would make a motion to recommend to the board of supervisors to approve exceptions number PPX sixteen dash zero three zero, one lot exception and four road exceptions for tentative parcel map number PPM sixteen dash zero three zero.
Second the motion.
Gong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
No.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
No.
Patiglano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes. And the motion passes?
I would like to thank the members of the public who attended, and as you can see that even the commission is not hundred percent on that vote. And you do have the opportunity to go before the board of supervisors, which is the next step. And thank you very much for attending.
Thank you to our staff. We did an outstanding job.
It was. This was an outstanding presentation. Thank you, Erin.
Great job, great job, Erin.
Interesting.
Change of heart, huh? Mister developer? Kills me to vote no on things like this. It's against our nature.
Okay, so we continue on to the director's report. He hasn't been here in the last couple of times.
I, yes, I've been.
Been busy.
Elsewhere, having other commitments as well as, I believe I was ill one of the days I missed. Just to kind of briefly, I know it's been a long meeting, just to touch on a few points. Just to, one of the things was that we have gone up with code enforcement up to Three Rivers regarding roadside paying rentals inside the California Caltrans right of way and in areas up there. So they only found two, two parties selling, and one of them was in conjunction with the business, and the other one was an independent person. And they've, they've moved them off and he's popped up at a different location. And he was renting them, so we gave them some ability to, to receive those chains back, you know. You can't really have them rent out a bunch of chains over the weekend and then disappear, then those chains are gone. So we gave them some, some ability to collect. So we're still in the process of doing that. So it was only really one, one roadside vendor doing that. So that's where we are with, with the tire chains. These short-term rental ordinance proposal is moving along. I think we'll have a draft in the next two or three weeks, an administrative draft, so that's moving, moving along.
So that will be an ordinance then?
It will be, it will be in the zoning ordinance more than likely. Again, this is up to the board. The board's direction was given to staff, and it really wasn't, they didn't want building, they didn't want business licenses or special use permits. Talked about just more robust registration, but then that does, then that lacks enforcement authority. Because if we were to say, you're not complying with what you've written in this application, we have no, we would have no authority to go after them. So what are we going to do? Just, they'll still do it and we won't get our tax revenue. So we need to write some standards into the zoning ordinance. It won't require use permits or, or building, or business licenses, but it'll have some basic standards, restrictions and practices. So that's what we're crafting that, as well as a more robust application process through the tax collector's office as far as what they need to fill out for their TOT. So that's moving along. Like I said, we'll probably have administrative draft in the middle of next month and probably have something to go public as far as some outreach, more than likely in May, May, early June, but probably in May. Cannabis, we're having to look at the cannabis again in the county because we have a moratorium that will be expiring later this year. I've mentioned this in the past. So we're looking to go to the board for direction. Before we go to the board, we'll probably have some outreach, a little bit of outreach to try to get what, what the sentiment of the public is regarding this. So when we go to the board and ask direction, whether that's, well, however they, they choose to direct staff, we have some, some outreach done in advance so we can kind of say where, where the communities and where the citizens are on that. So that will be something we'll probably be doing in the next month or two, some outreach. And we haven't determined exactly how that's going to occur, whether it's going to be meetings, surveys, how we distribute the surveys, those types of things. So that, that would be something we're formulating in the next few weeks and try to implement in the next month, month and a half, and then go to the board probably in May, probably in May for direction to see what their, their direction is for staff to proceed regarding that. Goshen Community Plan's still going forward. That should be, we're going to have some community meetings in Goshen next Thursday, starting next Thursday, and once a week for four weeks. So we've got that set up. Also, Three Rivers is moving forward and we're proceeding with that. The lamp, the, the lamp ordinance, or the lamp program and the zoning ordinance that went along with that is that the state regional board for approval next week. We are having to go back into the, to the board to tweak a couple of things in the zoning ordinance that goes along with that because the state asked for a couple of changes of minor in nature, but we're going to go back to the board for that here in April. So, and that briefly covers what we're, we're working on. Do you have anything? Bridges? Are we building any bridges?
Yeah, we are. We're doing bridges for the, the area. But we pretty much are, we have a little, little box over there that pretty much been built, we're working on the final touches and doing the road across. So apparently we have a road closed, so we'll be opening that shortly, you know, once we're finished the road, the road, the road pushes up. We have that, and we actually just received work today that we have, we got our construction money for the track one point nine and Sankey in that area, so we're going to be pretty much reconstructing that bridge. We're hoping to start the summer in July. We have any?
And for the record, we did all the environmental permitting for those projects.
Plus, we have Avenue one forty-four road projects. I don't know if you guys have been out there. Road is closed right now between ninety-six and right over there. We have a detour in place, so we're currently reconstructing that portion of the road. And our intent is to move this project, it's only, we're going to kind of overlay five and a half miles of road here. And hopefully next year we can hit the other half, another five miles before we can do that.
Did you say Road one forty-four or?
I didn't know where it was.
I didn't see anything happening in early March.
And that's going to be closed for quite some time, right?
Which one?
One forty-four.
No, we actually, it's going to be a couple of weeks. It's just the first segment. Once they open that segment, we'll open the detour. Because we're actually reconstructing the road. So, um, having to wait, you guys, I don't know, you guys go by the area. It looks really, really good. We, we paid, we finished the first phase, the second phase. We're transitioning between phase to next phase. So project, we're already satisfied with the, with the, with the project, you know, on schedule, so.
Through the chair, Mr. Commissioner, if you have any questions, I'm sure you.
By this house.
Sure. The sure, the project sure, the signal project or so?
Yeah, that's in the city of Visalia, correct?
Right.
So this is in response to, Ed, last time you had a question about a project, I believe it was near your property?
Correct, on Shirk Road, between, North Shirk.
Yeah, so I spoke to our engineering staff and that would be, believe it is the city of Visalia's project.
Right.
So we don't, we don't. I think the question is what they were doing, right?
What they were doing, yeah. I didn't, I didn't follow up with the city of Visalia to see what they're actually doing out there, but I can look, I can contact.
Yeah, I'm just curious because I see there's activity. In fact, they've got a new pole laying on my property right now. So it looks like they're going to replace some of the poles.
That's for parking.
And.
Is it encroaching onto your property?
Uh, not, it's, not really. It's on their easement. They've got thirty-five.
Oh, I see.
So it's, it's on their easement, but it's right next to my, my fence. And so it looks like they're going to be replacing one of the poles there, but I I don't know if they're going to replace it in the same location. It makes.
Are we looking at power lines?
Yeah, are they going to? No, no, no. My, my home is up just about a hundred yards north where that, the horse pasture is, right there, on the, north of Hurley. Right there. That's my, I'm the first house. And so there's a, the pole line is coming, well, they're going to, it looks like they're going to replace the poles right in front of my house. And if they're going to widen that, it's kind of silly to replace the pole, go through all that, leave it in the same exact spot and then come back and then have to move the whole thing over again.
Yeah, I've yet to, yet to see the, the plans. I could, I can, we can't contact the, the city of Visalia and see what they have planned out there. And I'd be more than happy to provide you that update.
Yeah, from the looks of it, they're just, the, the power company's just replacing their pole.
We can, we can reach out. It's electrical, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we can reach out to Edison as well and see what they're doing.
Okay. And nobody's approached me about taking any more of my property. So I'm assuming they're just going to put the pole right in the same spot that they've got this pole in. But I don't know.
Would you like me to report next time or just send you an email? What do you prefer?
Email would be fine.
Okay, I'd be more than happy to do that. I'll provide you a response by the end of today.
That's fine. And then, as I said earlier, they're, they're dropping poles all the way down there and they took the all the walnut trees off that canal that, the cross creek that just goes parallel for, you know, about a hundred yards to Shirk and then, then cuts across. I didn't know if they were going to widen the road at that point.
I believe, I, I, and again, this is a Visalia project, but I believe I'd heard somewhere that they're putting, doing improvements at the off ramps there at Shirk, and then maybe, and they're putting lights in and doing some, something there. So this is probably aligned with that, and ultimately whether they need additional right of way, I don't know, going north. But it's probably got something to do with that.
Right. Well, I was told at one time that they, they, in order to widen the road, they need an additional thirty-five feet of my property beyond the current easements that they've already got.
About in your master bedroom, right?
Just about, no. But it goes, it goes between my redwoods and my shop. So the redwoods, my, my, my redwoods that have blocked all the noise or a lot of it is going, are going to go away, it looks like.
And again, I don't know where they are in the project phase, but then if they were close to finalizing their, or, and they would have contacted you by now if they needed that, so.
That's why I'm thinking that it's maybe down the road a little bit, but then I saw the activity down closer to the, to one ninety-eight and on the, you know, so I just didn't know if they were starting, maybe starting the, the process.
I'll, I'll contact the city engineer and I'll shoot you an email on the details.
Right.
I just mentioned one other thing is Caltrans is going to be closing the southbound Betty Drive on ramp onto ninety-nine next Thursday at seven o'clock, and it's going to be, it's going to be closed all the way through, through the end of June, I believe. So there's a long term, and they're going to divert down to the three oh four on ramp.
It's good news. It means it's moving forward.
It's really good news.
Really good news.
How about Joseph's more money?
Looks like it's going to be a good off ramp, right? They've done a lot of, taken a lot of area, taken enough room to make it work for them.
Anything else?
Once again, thanks to the staff on that. That hadn't been a hard and complicated, and we're getting it off the books and moving it on to the next five, so, but I don't know, how, how many more of those we have left like that? You know, all development.
At least three or four.
As part of planning in general in the state of California? The endless supply of poorly zoned properties and.
Update on conference now?
Yeah, I'm, I know Velma's in the process of registering us. I think she got an email. Everything's open. It's up on the website. The cannabis is kind of an interesting timing for Tulare County in this because we're doing a panel discussion on that in the afternoon session on Friday, May fourth. And there'll be a city of, a Shasta city person, and they're going forward with the cannabis. And then there's a county person that's on the panel. They're taking a slow and make sure that all the, you know, the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. And then there's a state person too going to participate. So I think it's going to be very informative, and if we can get some county people up for that, they'd benefit from that too, so. Show of hands, who can go? We've got three. You can't go. New York? No. Okay, well, we're.
I'm going with Nancy.
Well, while we're taking registrations now, so I'm sure Velma can coordinate you signing up, and everything's falling into place. One of our ex-board members who was elected to the board of supervisors in Kern County, she is now the president of the California Supervisors Association. I forget exactly what they call that, but she's going to keynote the dinner. And she's also been just recently appointed by Governor Brown to the state prison board too. So she's a very interesting personality, and her, her name is Letitia Perez. And she's going to be kind of updating us on, you know, how planning and the supervisors work together. So it's really shaping up. It's a great event, and I hope that all of you, even not just commissioners, but others can go too because we're providing an incentive for county people to, you know, other staff and planners to attend.
And I do have one thing. Our Form 700 that you're all supposed to have done by now, by this weekend.
By this weekend, huh? I got to get mine in.
Great help with county staff, and they have finally gotten that website up where it was.
Great help with county staff, and they have finally gotten that website up where it was so smooth. It was so easy to do, and-
Like that last year, right?
Well, it was, but it didn't work for me last year for some reason.
It takes a while.
We had a hard time.
That's the kind of, I've been putting off. I say, I just go in and click a couple of things, I'm done.
And that's true. That's what you have to do now. It's really nice. I just wanted to-
Except for TK, they want original signatures.
You said that last year, yes.
I don't think you have to, but they just say you have to.
We haven't had to do that, and I believe it's through the same system, so I don't know.
Same system, but why does TK?
They don't trust you.
They, yeah, they might have their independent office-
Maybe it has something to do with the people that are on TK.
People are shady.
Yeah, shady.
I'll pass on your compliment. Michelle Baldwin was the one that put that to get it electronic.
Please do, because it really was. And then Melinda Benton-
And Melinda Benton is doing it.
Big help, yes.
All right. If there's no further items, we'll see you on April eleventh. Okay.